They have actually moved this meeting as I suggested so citizens could attend. Which is a good thing. Let's see here, get all this stuff tightened up. Won't nobody tipping over here. Got all this stuff fired up here. We are live downtown Everett's for the council meeting. I do believe it's going to be held today inside the public library. As y'all know, it's usually held over there, not a lot of space. Asked them last month, they'd move it over here because citizens have been saying they wanted to attend. We've got about seven minutes, eight minutes till it starts, so. I see the mayor and a few councilmen over there on their side of that car hanging out. See which direction everybody heads to. Which way everybody goes. Pretty weather here. Storm just come through a little while ago. Supposed to have some more storms about eight o'clock tonight move through. Think we're going to be having our meeting here today. So, we will be finding out in a few minutes. It's usually over there. That's where that little small room is I usually record from, right over there. When I seen them gathering up over here, I figured I'd livestream it today. I hope y'all were having a great day or staying safe out of the way of the storms. Glad to see a few of y'all is turning, tuning in. Council meeting starts here about six o'clock. Figured they'd take us in a few minutes before. I'm gonna try to get their Facebook page turned back on next. They completely shut that down. I think they have everything tied to their personal phones. Which is stupid. Hello, Miss Jackie. Doing good. Just one of the councilwomen. Hello, little doggy. You going to the meeting with us? Want to see what they're gonna do with them three million dollars. They got to try to find some water with. Hey, Benny Dell. How you doing, Benny Dell? Doing good, sir, doing good.
Turning into reporter?
Trying to. I was here last month.
Last night.
Oh, I didn't know you had anything going on last night. Oh, I didn't know nothing about it. We hadn't had no power in internet from that storm, I probably didn't know, heard nothing about it. Yeah, I heard they was doing something with it, but. Alrighty. Seems they laid it out for the public. Look at that. Now, is anybody gonna show up? That's the major question. What they plan on doing with the high school. Say the mayor. Talk about some of that anyway. Benny Dell being here. Eddie, y'all really set it up good for them, if anybody will come now. It don't matter. I will come. At the high school on the twenty ninth, yeah. Yeah, I got a few shots of that. I think it's gonna be a good thing. Yeah, that's amazing.
There are gonna be a lot of stuff for entrepreneurs, that's what they're really pushing us for. People that can do their own stuff, can make their own businesses, a lot of filming stuff. That's what's gonna be big, and what they're trying to do is film and.
Yeah, we got a. We got a beautiful area. I've always said this place is just as beautiful as Gatlinburg. You don't have to go nowhere to enjoy a place like Gatlinburg. It's right here. For y'all that attended Everett's High School, that's what it's gonna look like in the future. And I'll take you up there and show it to you now, that's gonna be beautiful. Once this meeting's over. Like the mayor does say, he's gonna be doing filming, all kinds of stuff up there. Entrepreneurs is what they're looking for. Now, if you all don't attend these meetings, it's your own fault. That's fact. I mean. The mayor has accommodated one hundred percent and then some. Free food, free cookies. This is our mayor right there, Eddie Manning. It's gonna be awesome what they're doing at that high school. I read something about that. But I didn't understand what all they was doing with it. Seeing these pictures gives me a lot better idea. Table of Sentry, how you doing? How you doing, brother? Eddie, we're fixing to get started.
Oh, we thank you. Best gift to us, love and mercy, and we ask God that you give us the wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to do. City's business, not only the city's business, but in our lives as well. We follow you, we ask that you help all the storm victims. Things that we've had happen years of late, we appreciate you for watching all the ones that you did, the comfort ones that suffer and lost, and ask God that you guide our hearts in all that we do. Jesus' name we pray, hear you, man.
We'll take the library, work us. If you're over here, I'm a lot nicer for sale, for sure. So, we'll go ahead. Go ahead and get the meeting started, uh, we'll call the meeting order. Day of Tuesday, May twentieth, when we call the order. Of course, Troy and Ronnie are not here, so we'll let Krista read over the financial report everyone.
The city of Everett's, we have the checking balances for four thirty, twenty five, general account. Uh, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred, eighty-four dollars and twenty-three cent, fire fund. I'm sorry, co-servants fund, one hundred sixteen dollars and ninety cent. Fire fund, six thousand, nine hundred, four dollars and twenty-three cent, police drug account, two hundred nine dollars and fifty-two cent. Street fund is five hundred eighty-eight dollars and twenty-four cent, recreation fund, one thousand, one hundred fourteen dollars, sixty-seven cent. The county garbage fund is twelve thousand, four hundred seventy-two dollars and twelve cent. Tops for kids fund is four hundred ninety-four dollars and eighty-three cent. The tourism fund is twelve thousand, seven hundred forty-eight dollars and seventy-three cent. Sanitation fund, six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirteen cent. Sewer operations fund, four thousand, three hundred thirty-four dollars and thirty-three cent. Sewer depreciation fund, fifty dollars, the water operations fund, seventy-one thousand, twenty-four dollars and thirty-two cent. The American Relief Plan Act, seven hundred thirty-seven dollars and thirty-one cent. The USDA bond account, five thousand, one hundred three dollars and seventeen cent. The water deposit fund, one hundred and ten thousand, three hundred eighty-two dollars and forty-seven cent. The KIA fund, one hundred dollars. The credit card account is sixteen oh five twenty-two. Moving on to your general statement, the total revenue for the month of April is seventeen thousand, five hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty-eight cent. Um, you had a total of expenditures, thirty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-six cent. With the deficit for the month of April, uh, seventeen thousand, eight hundred eighteen dollars and twenty-eight cent. Behind that is a list of checks for the general fund. Moving on to the sanitation fund, you had total revenue for the month of ten thousand, one hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty-three cent. Total expenditures for the month, nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-five cent. Uh, net revenue of the month was two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and the eight cent. And you had your warrant expenditure behind that for close to late. On that, we've got the sewer fund. Your total revenue, sixteen thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-one cent. Total expenditures is twenty-two thousand, twenty-nine dollars and thirteen cent. With a deficit of five thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-two cent for the month of April. Your checks are behind that. And last is your water fund. You had a total revenue of fifty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-six cent. Total expenditures is eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and six cent. To net operating revenue was a deficit of thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and fifty cent for the month. Behind that is a list of checks.
Anybody got any questions about any of the checks? We've got a few seconds left over. If you got any questions about any of the expenses, please ask us. Can I give a second, Jackie's second? Is everybody in favor of the financial report? You have any questions at all, later on? Right, next we'll move on from the minutes from last month.
The city of Everett's, the council meeting for Tuesday, April fifteenth minutes. Meeting is called to order, my report is read, Larry makes a motion to accept the report, Jackie, Sammy, and all present agree. Minutes from the March meeting is read, Larry makes a motion to accept the report, Jackie, Sammy, and all present agree. One report is read, the tank project is discussed, my performance to the city council, the project should be ready to be bid in May. He also informs the council that the Kentucky Waters Grant has been approved for one point five million. Ernie makes a motion to accept the report, and Larry seconds it, all present agree. Police report is read, Larry makes a motion to accept the report, Ernie seconds it, all present agree. Fire report is given, Ernie makes a motion to accept the report, and Ernie seconds it, all present agree. Ken informs the council that the fund B money is low, it is time to apply for the remaining money for the sewer project, and that we should go forward with repairs. For five out of the seven, fix the remaining two, once the money is available, Larry makes a motion. For Ken to apply for the fund B, for the remaining two pump stations, and to go forward with the money we have on repairing the remaining five. Also award the bid of five hundred twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars to Atkins for the project. Preston seconds it, all present agree. Uh, citizens present to ask the mayor and council if we could have the city council meeting. In either area, some of the citizens could come to the library, mayor informs him that we need to try to reserve the library. But if no one continues to attend, the meetings will return to the city council, we're in the city hall. Ernie makes a motion to adjourn, and Larry seconds it, all present agree, immediately adjourned.
Is everybody good with the minutes from last meeting? Good, we're right along. We're gonna, uh, go ahead and PJ talk to us about tourism and what he's got going on.
Thank y'all once again for letting us come back. I love being able to let him lead the meeting and keep everybody informed, um, this, was it this past Saturday that we came and reported? The pin had before last. Woody's our grandpa, had a customer appreciation day, um, got to go, I think all the two of the members tried to swing by at one point. Gave away our event flyer, uh, events for the year, and, uh, very well received, everybody seemed to enjoy that. Uh, we've got an event pretty much starting this weekend through October, just about one a month. Uh, I think the only month that we don't have a schedule of them at this point is September. Get something every month, um, and that's something that all the authority commissions, uh, tried to do. Got all the, the, um, parks coming up. Everything is ready this weekend, like I said, will be our Memorial Day Festival, it's in conjunction with the parks. Southern Shining Crawl. We've got a bunch of vendors, we've got the shiners that are coming up to set up with us, we have, uh, one of the moonshiners from the TV show, uh, Benny McClure. His nickname on there is David. He'll be there to meet and greet, he's gonna spend some time on the park as well. And just kind of hang out and let everybody know who he is and about, you know, the history of moonshining and his kind of thing. Thought that was kind of well fitting with the Southern Shine Crawl being this weekend, so we kind of tried to make that work. So far, we've had a wonderful time, uh, geared up, ready to go, everybody seemed excited to get the work done this year. Uh, we've already, like I said, we're already planning for, uh, we've got a barbecue event in June, and then of course, Fourth of July will be upon us before we know it. Looks like, um, overall, we're still in pretty good shape, considering we gross, you know, twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred dollars a month in incoming, you know, revenue, so. We try to be good stewards of that, we don't, now, of course, thousands of dollars are meant to be spent, they're not meant to be held captive, and we try to do that the best way that we can. To make the most impact for this community and the ones in their county. And I think so far that, I hope you guys are satisfied that we're doing a good job of that. If y'all ever have any suggestions or want to be part, you'd be more than welcome to come to any of our meetings. We try to have those on the third, Thursday following your council meeting, so we can have all of the reports at the same time. Y'all are always welcome to come, if anybody show up, but we would love to have more participation, especially with our events. Y'all show up, please, you're highly encouraged to. Uh, we really have a good time, the neighborhood responds well to it, the visitors love it, and I would love to have you guys be with us at any point. We'll throw you on something, if you want to volunteer, just come in and get one. Uh, do y'all have any questions at all?
What time Thursday?
The meetings, they're at six, just like the council meetings, they're Thursday, the third Thursday at six. If there's any change, we'll publish it on our Facebook page.
Where do you hold them?
City Hall.
Okay.
And like I said, everybody is welcome to come, like, we would love volunteers and people that want to gather around us and support, and we would take all people if they want to come out. Anybody else have anything?
Jackie?
Anybody got any questions for VJ or comments?
Yeah, through the winter, we kind of restrict ours a little bit because it's less people, but, uh, from this point on, from eight till, I think, five, there's someone in the office every day.
And I think, if I'm not wrong, VJ, I guess you're, I think the zip line back open?
The zip line just got back open this past week, so. And we encourage everybody to, if you have family that's not attracted, send them up. Um, at some point this summer, we'd already talked, uh, you know, I think I've talked to Eddie about it. We'd like to open that up to the city employees and their families and people within, you know, city government to come up and, kind of just do a walkthrough, and if you want to ride, we'll pick something up there. Just to kind of let you guys know what's going on. Um, we did have a break on, I think it was line ten, back, we were in the hurricane, we didn't see it. And it was repaired, we had a, an inspector come from Washington to do the inspection. And we've never had any issues with it, everything stays up to code, all of our guys are highly trained. And it doesn't really worry. Eleven stations begin at, uh, probably the midpoint on the mountain. You're taken up in a, like an old army, this and that.
Isn't it the longest in the state?
That, I'm not sure, I think it's close.
I think it is.
And with the eleven stations, I know it's the most stations that, that I've seen. Um, and it's truly, I'm, if, if you're not scared by it, even if you are, it's fun, it's, it's real. Our guides are very interactive, they like to encourage people to enjoy themselves and have fun on it. They like to talk you through it, there'll be landmarks and things that you're going across, and some of them are great enough to do some twirls and things. It's, uh, we try to make it fun, brave ones.
What's the price of there, if you just decide to maybe five, one day?
The day pass, we, we don't have day passes, we'll do a thirty day, and it's, uh, if I'm not mistaken, it's thirty-five dollars. Don't hold me too bad. Thirty-five, yes. The yearly pass is sixty-five, and that's a calendar year, so if you get the pass today, it's good till May. Yes, sir, and we've kind of done a little research, most parks are a hundred and north per day, or, you know, for their passes. And we've tried to keep it as low as we can, uh, of course, all residents get a five dollar discount.
What's it cost for that zip line?
I'm thinking it's fifty-nine, forty-nine ninety-five, or forty-nine ninety. Yes, sir, for first. Now, we do group rates based on the amount of people that are in the group, and, um, you know, we also do discounts for workers.
You take them up too, don't you? They don't have to have an ATV to.
For the zip line, you can drive to the zip line building, and they're loaded in a, uh.
I've, I've seen it, I've recorded, yeah.
And we take them up to the first station, and then they progressively work their way up there.
You got a minister there? We got a cleaning station installed.
I'm telling you, these guys, some of our guides have seen it all, they've seen the meek and lowly, and they've seen the dirt. Put Woody's hard rock down for half the crowd. I'd say, I would love to get everybody up there, at least give you a tour.
I went to Packet Creek last year, though, just for the weekend, and I had to pay a hundred and forty dollars for a pass. I mean, that, just that for that weekend, I had about, hell, there. I mean, that, just that for that weekend, I had to buy, hell, they're riding by my hunting license to ride. Yearly hunting license, that's like, a pass to ride.
Tennessee Wildlife Recreation definitely upped the ante on all of that stuff. And they've gotten a lot more strict on, you know, the rules and things, uh, once again, when, once this Kentucky resolution passes the House, that's gonna encourage a lot of people to, uh, in Kentucky, to license theirs and be able to ride them on the roadways as well. And that will, uh, definitely drive tourism traffic here. So, Kentucky seems like Kentucky's been really, uh, a leader in the, the industry all these. And Everett's being the birthplace of visitor tourism, has always been a great draw for us. But, uh, I do encourage you guys to come to the campgrounds on the weekends, and they're cool, socialize and get to know these people, they're wonderful. They truly appreciate what we do here, they love the people, they love the, you know, the welcoming and the feel that they get from folks. And our business is tremendously possible well from that, and they should, we're very grateful to have it.
Anybody got anything else for BJ? Questions calling in?
Now, I'd just like to say something, though, on the prices that y'all was talking about, they are real cheap. I was talking to a guest over there, I can show you pictures of her Jeep, she, every trail she goes on, she puts the name of the trail. She's probably got over a hundred places that she's took that Jeep to, and she's in here this weekend riding this one. And she was blown away by the price and the acreage that she can ride that thing for what she paid, so.
Honestly, we've talked about that every year. And of course, you know, you have to be profitable to pay the bills and the wages, but we are trying to be as, as cost friendly as we can be because we feel like that we should do that, it's good stewards.
Yeah.
And we've got a board, uh, we've got a manager, and hardly ever have any issues, or true.
Yeah, we're, we've always been one of the cheapest parks ever around.
And one of the ones with the largest acreage with the class trails that we have, and it's, it's really beneficial to the guest.
There's a long time ago, I remember twenty-five years ago, I sat on the board that did the business plan department. I was, we looked at it then, back then, we're saying we wanna keep projects as low as we could because it ain't like we're a stopover, we have to be a destination in Harlem, we can't be a stopover.
And something else I'd like to go chew on, I know it's five years, but next year will be the twentieth anniversary. Of, you know, Book of World Records parade that we lost to shortly after that. Love to see city council, the tourism, and the community possibly stage another one, see if we can't upset the record and claim it back.
What's another middle?
I, I, I just looked yesterday.
They beat it pretty bad, it wasn't just a couple of them.
The problem is, is having room to host everybody in staging area and then plan the parade, but maybe something we can work on going down next year and, you know, you don't, you're not tied to a date. But that'd be kinda a cool thing to do in twenty years later to work that out, do it again.
Can I get a motion to accept BJ's two's report? Have you made the motion? Are you saying, is everybody good with the two's? All good favor of that? Thank you, sir. Ernie and Larry. Next, we are gonna move on to the water report, Mr. Woody.
All right, water loss report, you can say that we finally come in under thirty percent, we're at twenty-nine percent right now. And, uh, that's, that's holding steady and coming on down, we're still just keeping, continuing looking for the leaks and things. And, um, I just wanted to, just to put those numbers into perspective, this time last year, we were pumping almost seventeen million gallons a month. And this past month, we pumped just over twelve million, and that's a difference of twenty-five of those tanks up there at the water plant. That are not pumping in comparison to what it was this time last year, so that's a, that's a, a big visual to me. It speaks more to me if I've got something to think about like that, so, uh, so really excited that the numbers are, are under thirty percent, that's been a long time coming, but, uh, we're still working hard on it. Um, had a, a gentleman from Nesbit Engineering, uh, come around, and this may be a, a segue for Mr. Colton. Um, it was an engineering firm, uh, talking about things that they're hoping to do at the high school. And came to the water plant and asked what our wish list was, uh, for growth in the city and what the sewer plant needs, what the water plant needs. Um, so we went over showing all the tanks, all lift stations, all the, anything at the water plant, uh, anything at the sewer plant. This is just in case something does go, uh, bigger with the high school than what, what we can handle. Uh, so we, we took him around, probably spent the better part of four or five hours just looking around, I mean, we talked about storm drain, drain water. Um, I and I, uh, water issues, just everything, so, uh, maybe he can speak more to what, what that was for and what that was about. But, uh, anyway, spent a lot of time with, with, uh, those guys, just in case there wasn't money available, um, just to kinda get the city to where we could handle something, if something big did happen, uh, with the, the high school. Um, but other than that, that's really all as far as the, uh, water report goes. Uh, just on the side note, just, uh, while, while it's my turn to speak, I do wanna say thank you for the police department. I thought, uh, been probably two or three times just the past month that, uh, we've seen the, um, property checks at, at the church. And the business just saying, hey, we checked it out and found it to be secure. While, while I had time to speak, I did wanna say thank you for, for their work and, uh, looking around at the different properties and things when we ain't there at twelve, one o'clock at night, and that goes a long way. And I really appreciate that from the business and the churches especially, so, uh, wanted to give them a shout out and thank them for their service. Uh, but as far as the water report goes, if you have any questions or, you know, maybe Mike may have some more information on, on some of the tank. Uh, the tank should be just about ready to put out a bid, uh, and he can speak more to that, uh, as far as the date, get that pinned down. But, uh, if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Mike, you were talking a little about the water project, sir?
Last month, we had the project ready to bid, and I put it out for contractors to look at and, uh, pump suppliers. So they kinda mentioned, said, well, it's so close, why don't we look at designing the pump to go to the new plant? So Woody and I discussed it, and I actually redesigned the pump so they pump to the new plant site. So, I just got the information today at four o'clock, uh, from the pump suppliers, so, looking at the calendar, June the twelfth. We Thursday prior to your Monday meeting, so that's kinda what I would say tentative, the newspaper runs on Wednesday and we'll get the advertisement the Friday before. So, I also co- uh, was contacted by Band of Mindlands this week, and, uh, they asked to confirm our grant request for the design of the plant. And we're on schedule to be, uh, giving a nine-hundred thousand grant just for the design. And then next year, them and other people will fund for the actual construction part. So, in October, we should get awarded the nine-hundred thousand, we'll design it, get approved by the state, and then all the other funding agencies will jump on board to fund the actual construction part.
And everything that we're trying to go after, we're trying to get everything sized, just like we're, we're, we're preparing for a new plant, just so that we don't set ourselves back that we've already got a leg up as far as anything that we install. So, and we try to, because we don't want, you know, to say, well, we need another billion dollars for this, when we could've done something now. That would save us that much money in the long run, so, uh, just a couple of other things too, I, I did wanna let everybody know that Black Mountain had a lot of issues. And, and our guys, uh, went and helped them, uh, which, you know, we're all in this together, so, them Black Mountains customers are our friends and neighbors too. So our guys went, really did a lot of, did the hard work for them, uh, leak detecting, helping fix leaks and all that, so that was a, that was a big help to them. And we've got a, a new guy that's over the system, and he's still learning the system and everything, and was a bit overwhelmed, so we partnered with the county to try to help them. And our guys went and did what they can do to help and just worked out together to get Waln's restored and.
And Black Mountain.
Black Mountain, whatever, what, wherever they need, uh, whether it was backhoe work, uh, manpower on the shovel or leak detection, whatever. So, our guys was, uh, apt to go, just dive in headfirst, and some cases, that was the case, they were over their head, so, uh, just wanna shout out to our guys as well for helping get them taken care of, working with them. They've done the same thing for us, they've helped us before, so we, we was glad that we had an opportunity to repay the favor.
Yeah, that worked out pretty good, 'cause we had, uh, you know, we were having so much trouble with water down there that I reached out to Dan and I said, how can we help? And Dan said, manpower, yes, we'll, we'll do whatever we have to do with the city to help y'all get water back on, because, you know, by grace of God, we ain't had no water issues in a year and a half, but it, that could change at any minute, and we need their help. You know, all of them come to our aid, so we will try to go to their aid anytime we have the opportunity to help get people back in water, we just need to be a team. It's not just one utility district that needs, we all need to be a team to help each other, and, and they helped us.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
They guys did a lot for us.
Yeah, absolutely, they did, and, uh, one last thing, we had Division of Water come in to go up into Laurel Ranch, we got permission from, uh, Lee, 'cause he actually owns the land. They're actually wanting to go in on, just to kinda investigate, to find out, uh, more about another raw water source up past where we're at, uh, coming out of the hole up in Laurel Ranch. So we're gonna look into that, uh, so that might be a valid source, and that's with, uh, with people who do the wells, you know, that's what they specialize in. And they said that's probably one of the better shots to get good water there in South Branch, so either way, if we do find water there, that we've, we've got the money to, uh, uh, Mike can always work for, putting that in. Uh, so that we can get another raw water source and it be a mine. So they're gonna just look and see if it's flowing, see how many gallons per minute and all that, see if it is worth food with, because it probably would have to be pumped rather than directly fed.
Right now, Woody, we don't know, I think we have one.
One, and it's not even full capacity, we've still got, uh, three wells that, uh, that we've got on reserve.
So you think about this time now compared to this time last year, or, you know, even the year before that, you know, this time of year, we're running full force just trying to keep up.
Yeah, sometimes with the river pump.
Yeah, and even when we hadn't had that river pump been in in.
Three months.
Been a long time, so they're, uh, they're actually, with the leak detection that Larry's been able, well, I say all the guys. Larry's kinda spearheaded it, you know, think about the electricity, think about the chemicals, Larry's all talking about the chemicals. Uh, the mine source, if we're just running just mine source, the chemicals run minimal.
Well, we were able to run longer this time, we've been able to run over two months straight with, uh, just the mine water. And that's the first time that's happened in, I think, about sixteen years, seventeen, something like that.
A lot of that's got to do with the leak detection, I'm sure.
Yes.
So, you know, we're, you know, it's kinda nice when people kinda say, hey, I see water coming up top of the thing, that means we're full.
Yes, that's right.
So, but it's, it's been a blessing, I know you guys, maybe y'all haven't been here to many meetings, but the project that, uh, that Mr. Magg is talking about is the tank, that's the first part of the project, so. And that'll help us tremendously too, to be able to water system. So our infrastructure is starting to really, you know, I guess the greasy wheel gets the grease, and that's why we told everybody when we was having trouble, you know, we can complain all day long. They think I want something, but when they hear it from the citizens, they, they listen to it. So the more complaining, the better it was for us, now we're starting to see some of the fruits of the labor of people complaining to the state, so now we're starting to see some of that, so I think next year.
Is, uh, was a major issue, uh, but even at that, our, our infrastructure is still dilapidated, so it's, it's still something that we need to make sure that we keep, you know, pushing with our representatives, senators, whoever, just letting them know that, hey, we're, we're doing better, but we're still, we're still needing facilities. So, so that's, that's something that's been a concern of mine, is that so long as things run smooth, we maybe get forgot about, so we, you know, just need to try to do what we can do to push the buttons we need to, to keep the money coming, because it's definitely, we couldn't just let ourselves, but with the help from federal, government agencies, what we need done.
Yeah, a year ago, somebody asked me, and I had people ask me, you know, could you all handle more industry, and I'd say absolutely not, infrastructure won't. Now I feel pretty confident that we're moving in the right direction, like with Hope High, that no matter what happens up there, we're moving in the right direction in our infrastructure between water and sewer, with new sewer projects that we had. You know, to make it, uh, more feasible for, for businesses to look at us, because now I can say confidence, yeah, I think we can handle it. Last year, I don't think we could, the year before, for sure, with that infrastructure.
Well, that other tank, that's just like having another bullet in the shotgun, so to speak, I mean, you're, you know.
About like having a whole clip.
Yes.
Pretty precise clip.
And the extra water, you know, up in there, there too, that.
Yeah. Yeah.
More you got, uh.
There we are. Yeah.
You got anything else, sir?
No, sir.
You got anything else on water, sir?
Unless he has anything to add to it with Nesbit coming around and asking.
I don't know, we don't have.
Can I get a motion to accept the water report? Ernie made the motion, Jackie second, everybody good with the water report? Next, we're gonna move on to the police report. You're up, sir.
Total of, like, what was that? A total of, uh, six case reports, of those six, two were drug related, three theft, and one assault. Always glad to see zero collisions, uh, total of three voters assist, twenty-one responsive complaints, eight agency assists, nineteen traffic stops, twelve arrests, and a total of four hundred and fifty more man hours. Uh, Mike, uh, he was talking about earlier with the door and offer, probably had a great idea there, the evenings, uh, and businesses are closed down, and churches and stuff like that. They just get out, make sure no windows are busted out, doors kicked in, no, essentially just no funny business, make sure no one was breaking in, uh, so they've been doing a great job with that. Uh, something I just wanna add to the, in there is, uh, the weather, gonna take a back turn tonight, uh, I've seen some things in the eye, it's M P M. So, guys are getting in bed, just be, be aware of that, keep, uh, keep something, uh, a monitor close by, we seen what happened in Summer said, and London, and something like this, uh. We don't want to, want everybody to be prepared, just have a plan and be aware of what's going on.
Anybody got any questions for Danny? Nothing, all right, can I get a motion to accept the police report? Charlie made a motion to accept the police report, what did I say? Everybody good with the police report? Thank you, sir, appreciate you a lot, all you guys do, we appreciate you. Next, we're gonna move on to, as I like to say, the main man, Cleto, the fire shooter.
Ain't got a whole lot going on, uh, we did assist Yalkam Creek on a quick fire up there at, uh, Black Mountain. And, uh, other than that, we've done a lot of, uh, going out and cutting trees out of roads and things like that, and last few storms were bad. Last Friday, we was out at four o'clock in the morning, and I believe Friday before that, we was out again late, cutting out the trees. Uh, this last Friday was not too bad here in town, but outside it was. And then Friday before last, there was a lot of people that were getting hit that period. Other than that, that's pretty much it.
Anybody got anything for Cleto? Now, you made the motion to accept Cleto's report? Jackie second, everybody good with that? Everybody's in favor of that? It's moving right along now, now we're gonna move on to old business, uh, old, old thing I really, I got a few things on old business, Ken's not here really to talk about the sewer project. Uh, sewer project, everybody in council knows, and I'm sure most of the people who knows, we're gonna be, uh, redoing five and seven lift stations. So when they redo all them, we should be in really good shape for sewer for a while, so that's what that is, but Ken's not really here to talk about it. So, but it's, it's, it's moving right along, it's just, really wasn't no reason for him to be here in August to really talk about it, but that is progressing. So, uh, that, and then the Hope High and the old business, because as you guys remember, when, uh, Eric Hubbard of Backroads, Matt Plancha come in and talked to us, uh, about six months ago, maybe a little longer. Talked to the guy, everything you'll counsel about, uh, Hope High, and now that's starting to really become a, a reality, starting to put some, uh, pictures and, and pencil paper, you say. And y'all see some stuff behind us, it was a real good meeting over here last night, uh, there's another meeting on twenty-nine, one P M, at the high school gymnasium, is that correct?
Right.
So, is there anything you wanna tell them about Danny, or that, we, we kinda went over a little bit that night, but Eric was, it was just in the preliminary stages, wanting the city, you know, to stand behind it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, that's what it was, and that's, uh, hey, Eric, I just wanna thank you, I just wanna give an overview of all last night, to me, thanking the ones that, that was here and those that want, if it was not, and we still, we saved food for you tonight, so, go ahead. Go ahead and, and help yourself, all.
So, please go ahead. Go ahead and, and help yourself. But, uh, these are people who have bought way too much for last night, and so we put the fridge right around untouched. Just plenty there for lunch for a couple of days for people. But, uh, the, uh, has been, has been discussed in the designs they might bring up, that the funding has been appropriated for the purpose of the town. That's where NASUS is, is assisted in that to see what the city's capabilities are and all that, because that'll be part of their, uh, submitting of what can be handled by water and sewer at that time. Uh, there was a representative here last night who was, uh, you know, advising us and helping us in relation with NASUS. And, uh, the work, architects, the work that they have done, this is the possibilities that can happen to your Hope High School up here. And from that, they were gleaming what the community wanted, you know, and, and of course, it's, there could be multiple things. That building is so big, I mean, it's, and, and properties have, they've got a, they've made suggestions, but that's just, the suggestions, they want to know what, and we got some good suggestions last night. But, uh, I, I always said, I kind of summed it up as a college level vocational school, just four companies themselves, Caterpillar, Cabota are talking with them, you know, where they'll actually have the skills for our locals, absolutely. But it bring luring people in to where they will want the young people or they would want to live here, raise a family. This is a great economic growth that our kid won't have to leave, go to Knoxville or Lexington or somewhere to get this training. This won't be, be offered here. Those things are already going to be in the works. And this portion has to be done before the bigger money just can go after it be solved. So, that's where it'll be further discussed on May twenty ninth, high school gymnasium at one o'clock. And, uh, there'll be states, senators, representatives, and things that will be there speaking on it behalf. Kind of wanting to make sure we get some commitments where they can see that this is a serious project in Backroads and Elk Creek Health and Wells, uh, along with the designers and engineers, uh, four by three productions, which is actually, you know, that they're already, they did most of the work at Procter and Gamble in Cincinnati now. There, there's no reason, and this is their own words, that it can't be done here in Harris, what they do in Cincinnati, what they do in Hollywood. That, and it can be done much less here, obviously, than what it can be done. Therefore, our people work. It's, we, we think of that as, hey, that only takes place in Hollywood, but as I've been informed, that the majority of Hallmark movies are made like in western, central and western, and that, not in Hollywood like it used to be. So, I mean, things, things will, they want to capitalize on, on our mountains and stuff. But this won't be, uh, big production, I would think. Hopefully, I hope it turns into it, but it will be where locals can have, uh, input, uh, auditions. Auditions will be made, electric, big green screen. And, and if you all have, have any suggestions, this was a suggestion meeting last night, and I'll be glad to pass it on. The architects will have some designs, additional, I guess, based on our comments last night at the twenty ninth. They're, they're working very fast. This thing has happened very fast. I, I think we'll start seeing results. Much, much quicker than we realize. Do take a look at pictures up there of what the concept is. I know it's over here on the right is the, is the old gymnasium, what it can be. Uh, that burn house got rock ceiling in it, but when, uh, few, Preston and I, or a few of us went up there, those big arcs beams that you see in that picture will now be exposed. That's just some of the things that they're, they're designing to make use of. Some of the older building like Quonset does, most likely to be torn down. A few garage builds, where they'll be able to work on Subaru's, the, the Backroads of Appalachia have, obviously, uh, with Eric, they, they won't be heavily involved where these, uh, machines can be worked on and not just, uh, not just the standard garage, but actually, uh, I mean, some really meticulous work. There's actually no reason. There'll be housing. We try to tie that in with, I would say, with tourism as well, because the, it's much, much needed. What's happening at Little Ridge this time next year, there's no way these counties will be prepared for the influx amount of people that's gonna be coming in. So, we try to be, we hope to be forward. It's, it's exciting. I, my life, this, this is the most that I see of a possibility that we have since many years ago, when all that, when the whole industry was providing, of course. So, this, this is ready. And we're already ahead of the game with the venture tourism, but what we're already got in town now is with the infrastructure being our benefit. And if you notice the picture over, up in the high school there in front, they're, they're proposing no utilities to be exposed. I mean, there's a law out to be in approval that city and state and everything too. But to bury the utilities, those telephone poles that we all lose mirrors on up there, that, they'll be gone. They'll be buried. So, with water and sewer and the fibers and all that. And, uh, potentially, uh, widen new sidewalks, at least from the church to the intersection. I think, I think it's something that we all be very proud of. And, and any questions, you know, I'll be glad to tell you what little, what I can provide. If not, I'll pass it on and get you the answer, but about twenty nine.
Well, I've always said this probably won't never be a dollywood, but at least we welcome anything that we can get to help, and that sound like a good thing to me.
I, I think it'd be a game changer, not just for Harris, but I think it'd be a game changer for the family. If they want to, they want to make it into like a model of what can be done in other schools.
Gotta start somewhere. I don't know if they could have come up with a better name. Hope High.
Hope High.
You know, wait, what's his name?
Are you saying low?
Hope High. Spill every time. Hope, like I get hope.
I'm talking about high, duck side.
Hope High.
No, the ladder is a ladder, but that sound like one step, first step.
Yeah, actually, we're, we're up on the ladder a little bit because of the approval of the grant. Our, our texts and designers and engineers, you ever make a good pop at Mike, hey, that's a lot of the, a lot of expense before you actually start the construction, if you ought to deal with your other projects. But please take a look at that and, uh, just, I, I didn't take it up, but it'll be available again at the school on the twenty ninth. I just wanted to counsel members to see the possibilities.
There'll be a lot there. You know, I think a lot of, uh, a lot of what they liked about us is the same things that people's been here for twenty-five years like about us. A lot of grit and determination in our citizens. Nobody's had an easy year in life. We've all faced things, it's been hard on us, but we continue to rise up. We continue to get up every morning and go to work and no matter what we face, you don't find that anywhere anymore. So, that's something that I enjoyed making, uh, suggestions is great, you know, they had a lot of suggestions there. A suggestion box would be good, because there may be a lot of people that don't want to speak in front of people. Got good ideas, but maybe are afraid to speak out, you know, and say, hey. Uh, that'd be great to see up there too, you know?
And the, the whole intent is for economy to deal, just to create jobs, any economy, uh, open economy that's possible.
The city, but you'd imagine the city being back the kind of traffic we used to have whenever it's high school was. I remember what it was like. The traffic, just the people that was in and out of town and spending money and, you know, since the high school closed down, it's made it a lot more difficult for.
I don't think we have graduating class in seventeen years, so that, there's a drop.
And I, I encourage everybody to come to that meeting because I think it's, uh, I hope that we're all around to see it, you know? But I think it can, like me and Elsie, I think it can really be a, a game changer for the city, because once that takes off, then the other things are snowballs. Infrastructure, and we talked about that. Once that takes off, then that stuff comes in behind it, you know, hey, you know, if we're gonna handle this, the state pushes this, we're gonna have to have this in our infrastructure, or this in our road, or this in our drainage systems, and those things come running behind. That's exciting for us. People to do things that, you know, before, when you go and ask for, you know, a million dollars to help your drainage system, they're gonna look at you like, why do you need it? Would want it? Would you need it? With this project, you know, it becomes a, a need and not a want anymore. So, and that's what they look to fund, the needs. So, I think it's, I think it could be really great for the city as far as, uh, as far as, you know, everything, roads, culverts. I mean, those are things nobody talks about, but those are the things that gets funded after you have a project. You know, not before.
That's the expensive part you don't see.
That's the thing that I see that really makes the city look better, it function better.
Well, it would make a lot of, a lot of other things grow all around. Just everything will get, could grow and get better.
Yeah, there's a, Windstream has a dedicated line. We've had it for years when we first started, you know, trying to do this thing, and we worked out a great, we dedicated then the fiber to the back. Now, it's available, but we're looking at six years ago, seven, whatever, that. I was talking about solar and high-speed internet. You're already, I mean, it's close as we were to their main computer systems and their transfer of your, already ran the back of the high school set. The things like that is, uh, is just ahead of the game, the things that would be needed. The, uh, it's went through the environmental studies, it's went through the structural studies. Had to make sure everything was clear, the Brownfield studies, you know, asbestos and all that, just not, it's not that, nothing there. The old gas tank was out back with the trucks, buses filled up there, that's gone. There's nothing, any kind of issue. And the input too, the expansion of the clinic, this whole clinic's gonna be moving toward it, and, uh, they hope to be able to work in conjunction with them where more medical things can be provided under their licensing and stuff in and so. I mean, just, uh, just think even an overnight observation facility or something with a few rooms. Different, you, you can see in the picture the entrance there, one of the, another entrance is there where the old, where the Wildcats painted on that flare pad. Another entrance.
So, you gotta think about this, you know, if this Hope High stuff goes through and you see this up here and it's going that way, and then you're talking about getting a new clinic up here, you know, in all honesty, we may end up, I mean, you wouldn't think about this in average, but we may end up being one of the most modern looking towns in eastern Kentucky with the addition of the new clinic and that, you know, this area here, you know, will look like, will look like we belong. You know, we'll be real modern. And, uh, so, I mean, it can be a really, I think it's gonna be a game changer for our, for our kids and grandkids.
One thing I noticed last night that just made me pretty proud was when Ms. Donnie was talking about the preparation work that had went into this and the restoration and the, the, just keeping up with the school and structural integrity and how far along, that she was completely blown away. That we were that far along in the process that she, I, I think she made a remark that in all the projects she had worked in her career, this was one of the better prepared projects that she had ever had the privilege of working on. And when you're dealing with federal and state funding, that means a lot. To be prepared, have the groundwork done, because all of those things have to be done before you can even present them for funding. And where, that project is so far along that I truly feel confident that something is gonna happen. Regardless of what it may be, and the, the possibilities are endless at this point, but with Woody and the city and everyone building all these infrastructure upgrades to support it, with the fiber, we are so much further along than a lot of cities and counties as a whole in this state that I extremely would rather be part of this board.
Yeah, thank you, BJ. As what you referred to, those that haven't been to the school, we went into what we call the, the display room, which is one of the classrooms, make a birdie, the bird, the plans of what's gonna happen and what can happen, rather than, but as you know, we've, we've tried and not been successful on some very good projects that we tried to do stand alone and, we could make happen as a, as a group. And that's when we saw outside hill with, with Backroads and, uh, with, uh, he's, he made contacts and we got Sandy Dunn, who, and she's, and then, when she came in, she saw all the Zarae there, she said, you're one ways of the city, so y'all support it again. But I give that credit to Ed Childers, y'all heard me talk about him, and fortunately, he died a couple of years ago, but he wanted to give back to his community. And it's thousands and thousands of dollars of, of work, hundreds of thousands that if we'd had to pay the engineers and architect as their scale models of the town, scale models of the school and business performance, and it's already been done. It really, uh, like architects said, they took a lot of our priest stuffs that y'all making, make our jobs easier. He did that, Mr. Childers did that, but we want to give back. Uh, his family has always been, uh, involved in the community. You may, some, you heard me last night, his grandfather was the president of the co-corporation. And during ordnance, and as he came out of his office, was assassinated. Later, later, didn't die immediately, but a couple, a few days later, he did die. And unfortunately, and then, uh, Mr. Childers' father and his mother, she, she died of cancer at early age. They married and left, and he wanted to finish school here in the community. Then, there was the benefits, it's available now in the community, kept him going so he could finish high school. It goes on to Cincinnati. Became a, became a mechanical engineer to the degree of he was the chief designer of the articulated head for the state of Long. That company, the McCrone Company, Cincinnati. So, he said, what can, when, when we were making these proposals, he would come into the school, he did, and he was just like, oh, the guy. He says, what can I do to help you? I thought he was gonna give us a donation. And he did. Then he's, he, he said, he, he wouldn't want to speak. He said, you, you, I'll, I'll make designs, you tell about it. And, and he did. It's, so, we, certainly as time goes by, he, he was up there. He wanted to give back, he was, he gave that effort.
Yeah, I think these kind of projects, contacts means everything. I think they got two really good contacts in Sandy there. I mean, they, I've had a lot of discussions with them. They want this to work, and if them two want this to work, they'll go twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and they'll push, and they'll, they'll get it in front of Congress, Senate, they don't care if they believe in it, and them two truly believe in this project.
They made, they made it personal.
They have.
If they want it, they're gonna do that. But you, I'd say, uh, she's got some pretty good speakers coming on the twenty ninth too, contacts. All it can do, look at Hope High School and invite the high school.
Anybody got any questions for Danny? It's not the problem.
You know, bring a room up to high school where you can go in and see all this.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
I'd like to see.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be nice. It'll, it'll be open to twenty ninth, if I can go in now.
All right, that's all I had. If you get, anybody got anything in old business? That's all I had. Okay, how about new business? Any, any councils, anything new business? Oh, we gotta do this new business, don't we? Yeah, just gonna get your stud. Y'all remember the, uh, that we, we've got a guy that was a representative that represents us for FEMA to the city, you know, he's been working with us now for probably about a year, year and a half. Anyways, uh, we talked to them about some projects he'd been working on as far as some of the flooding we've had, as far as the culverts and some things. And, uh, they got back with us and told us that we actually need to go ahead and, uh, designate him, the council needs to approve him as a designation, to be able to do these FEMA projects for us, which is just a possibility. We need to do that tonight too. we need to do that tonight, too, uh, and it's excellent for emergency management, I guess, but that's what.
Well, kind of, yeah, it's for, it's for FEMA, but it's for emergency management. Uh, FEMA came in and done an audit last week, so I got a couple of things I actually gotta do, we gotta do this for him, and then I gotta, we gotta make a motion, too, after that, but, um, I need, we need to appoint two council members, I don't really know what for, but our managers have to be on this floor, it's a resolution that JD Madison, he's our emergency management coordinator, is hereby authorized to execute for and on behalf of the city of Everton, in Carlin County, a public entity established under laws of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, that this application is to file in the appropriate state office for the purpose of obtaining certain federal financial assistance under the Disaster Relief Act, or otherwise available from the President's Disaster Relief, the city of Everton, a public entity established under the laws of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, hereby authorized its agents to provide to the state and to the federal emergency managements for all matters pertaining to such federal disasters, assistance, insurance, and everything that's printed on this form, uh, passed and approved this twentieth day of May, twenty twenty-five. And basically, it's just, he's gonna step in for me, so that we don't have to be there signing it, but everything he does, he sends to us.
Yeah, we have to.
Yeah, he can't write, like, so I'll go from FEMA into our FEMA account, I'll write the checks, the invoices comes to me, he'll coordinate with CLEDO and anybody else that we have that will be doing any kind of repairs, we've already had to do, go ahead and fix one of the projects, we're probably getting ready to have to do a second one down in Milton Division, um, so, you know, it's just stuff that we gotta get done, and I just need a motion and a second on this, and whoever makes the motion, the second, we'll put your name on this form, and then we'll move forward on that, and what the motion on the procurement code for FEMA.
And what that's for, like I said, that's for, like, if we have any flood here in town, we have had some storms, bad storms and things, that's gonna affect some of our drainage, so that's what he's went after, to get some FEMA grants to fix some of our drainage issues and some stuff that's been there.
I think there's eight, is there eight CLEDO that we've got right now?
Yeah.
Um, that he's got on the list, I could try to find it in my email, but, um, there's too many, I'm literally on my phone, um, that he's gonna be doing, one we've completely redone already, it's up on Nolan Street, because it caved the road in, so we had to do it, and then the other one is in Milton Division, it's doing the same thing, so we'll probably have to go ahead and get it done soon, so, but anyway, we just need a motion and a second to, uh, appoint JD as our designation of applicant agent, basically. We got a motion. Oh, we got urgent, yeah.
We got a motion?
We got urgent, we got a second.
Give a second, for that, everybody.
Yeah, and I don't want to jump out at one, Charlie, you sorty, and Charlie done it.
No, I didn't either.
You did, too.
I guess I'll be second on that.
Well, it's not gonna bite your head off, I promise, my name's on it, too.
Yeah, and like I said, anything JD does, he has to, he has to run through us anyways, but that keeps us grounded on these FEMA meetings, is everybody in favor with that?
And does anybody have any questions about it?
Not, not council question, if, is any of that involved in the street or high school, that might be something to incorporate, say, the.
No, because that's a state highway. We can't do anything on state road.
Yeah, I understand, I was just saying, if that's gonna take place.
Oh, I understand.
For the drains, or.
No, what this has gone through is anything that, like, uh, well, we had some, some drainage collapse from the, that, was it February, we had that flooding, and we had some drainage that got washed out, and things like that, that's, that's all it is, is just playing, replacing, you know.
Notice, notice, uh, one of those pictures up there, the sidewalks, back in the day was how, now the sidewalk is up, road legal sidewalk, at Washington, and I don't see a little on those there at that time.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll point that out in one of the pictures, so, it's just a little, back here, uh, I found that interesting, I mean, you actually, big difference instead of level alone, and, uh, so, that's the proposal, if we do brick blacktop, this portion of two fifteen, you know, grind down, take it back down to where the original sidewalks was at, that's some of the, as you tell, designs, some of the freshest.
Um, and like I say, the FEMA came in from Brentford, and then an audit on our FEMA stuff that we've not even been yet, but, anyway, one of the things I said we needed to do is we need to write and pass an audit, so we'll do this at the next meeting, but I have to have it in our minutes for this meeting, that we're gonna do it and send it to them, um, to follow procurement codes per state priorities. Now, we've always done it per project, like, Mike, when we do, when we do a project, it's in the resolution, it says it in the resolution, per procurement, the attorney will sign off that we don't follow procurement codes, well, they're not happy with that, so now we have to actually do an audit on it, so I have to have a motion that we're going to write, I don't know, it's gonna have to be rare, yeah, but, we're gonna have to write and pass this audit, and then I'll have to send these minutes, and I'll have to wait next meeting. Anyway, I need a motion for that, please. Yes, Ronnie and I'll get together, he'll write it and approve it, and blah, blah.
I have a motion on that.
Yeah, okay, I need a motion for that, Charlie's sake, is everybody good with that?
Well, maybe Charlie.
And the attorneys will write the, they'll write the minutes for us to bring back to us. So, we got a new business, does any, citizen call me, anybody got anything?
This is Mr. Dan Ryan, I'm gonna beat him in here, he came to me today, asking, uh, how he could help the city, maybe try to procure some, uh, playground equipment, and I told him he asked me on a good day, it's council meeting, and everybody that needed to hear what he had to say, and what he's proposing to do would be here, so, this is Mr. Dan Ryan, moved down here from Indiana, um, and him and his family fosters children over his life, he's fostered, I think he's in over a hundred, and has four or five right now, so, so, anyway, this is, uh, Mr. Dan Ryan, just wanted to introduce him, gain friends, so, uh, here's what he has to say.
We just moved down here the first of the year, we bought a house in Milton Division, and I've been there a while, uh, one I'm suggesting is that the playground down there at Madden Park, my wife and I would like to spearhead an effort to get playground equipment in there, donate it to Everton.
Sure.
In order to do so, I have to have Everton letterhead, you know, so I can send these out to the different places, and some of the companies that I've done business with in the past, to see if we can't get some free equipment down there for the kids, because I seen six or eight out there yesterday, there's nothing to do there, and then I've got kids, so, I, I thought it would be a good thing for the community, and especially that area of town, I mean, I've seen it changing a little bit, people start to fix up their houses and clean up a little bit, other than a couple, but with police presence, because I don't know too many about keeping more presence in the areas, will keep some of the, the less wanted folks away from there, so, I mean, that's my proposal, I would more than happy to do all legwork, do whatever it takes to, to get it done.
Absolutely, first of all, say welcome to Everton.
Thanks, sir.
I wish more people would take initiative to come in and try to do this for us, because we'll take all the help we can get, but, yeah, I think it's a great idea, and of course, council would like to prove it, but I think it's a great idea.
I'll make a motion, y'all can write them a letter, like, he gets so.
And just, I wanna throw this out there, that we, we do have, uh, a slide that was donated recently, the tourism is working on, uh, giving a, like a landing at, an access point for, and we're gonna try to install that down there at that park, but that is one of the areas that we discussed in several meetings, that we would like to, well, and we truly appreciate anything that you'd like to do to help, and, and I told my meetings are, you're more than welcome to come, we'd love to have you, and, and like everybody else, we'll put you in order, but, yes, thank you.
I don't mind doing the work, I do wanna be involved in the community, so, if anybody needs anything from us, well, Preston knows how to get ahold of me, I just live right around the corner from him, and Woody can get me.
I got him, I got him, pretty much, yeah.
He put, he put right in the door.
Yeah, I said, Preston needs somewhere to go play.
We should appreciate it, we'll take all the help we can get.
Yes, sir.
You know what, it's, uh, it's nice, we can take the initiative to try to help.
Charlie, did you say a second on that one?
Is everybody good with that?
I'm a retired contractor, so if anybody needs anything, you can just yell, the city needs something, let me know, I'll donate my time.
Yeah, you just messed up.
Let's get the leases.
Boy, I take leases.
Uh, we do have some signs in order, I meant to tell everybody, uh, I got ordered, all of the parks in town, now that one down there already says it, uh, just for example, that one says Madden, uh, Park and Playground, Push and Grunt is now named Push and Grunt Park and Playground, um, this one up here is the Burlfee Memorial Park and Playground, then we have the Everton Preschool Park and Playground, and so all the signs have been ordered, um, Deaton is working on those, we should have those probably in a month, because he's gotta make four brand-new signs, and he's gonna have to install, um, it is, can I talk about why we needed to do that, I mean, can we talk about?
Yeah, you can.
Um, we, we've had some problems with some sex offenders living around our little parks, and in order for them to have them to leave the parks, legally, it has to say playground.
Good.
And now all parks in town will say playground.
Awesome, yeah, that was something that was discussed a while, Mike, about to, it gets a swap with bike, because they would be.
The tourism kinda is over our playgrounds, because that's part of the beautification of the city, is their money is to take care of the playgrounds, so they had to vote and pass to rename those playgrounds, so once they did that, then we got the signs ordered, and it's kind of been a little process, but we got it all done and took care of, so now the signs have been ordered, and they'll probably, I'd say that we have to do it in about a month.
We just actually had a question on it, it was not.
Well, now, you know, now.
It's, uh, that was something that we had to restart early on, to make sure that, anything we can do like that to, to make things better, we'll do that, uh, and we're glad to, and we'll.
We'll keep our kids safe.
Oh, speaking of signs, there has been a few of our intersections where you've got a stop sign that's very vague, needs to be replaced.
Okay, CLEDO, if you want to, get a, go around and get a, we done this a couple of years ago, get some list up of what we need to order, and we'll take care of all of those, because we want them to be, you know, high visibility for people, thinking, thinking, same.
I think the storm has took care of some actual street signs, too, we might need to replace them.
All right, so if CLEDO wants to get up with that, just get us a list of everything, and we'll, we'll get everything ordered, and, yeah, that's something we need to do every few years.
Speaking of signs, this, uh, bridge here at Save Lot, I know it's a state highway, but you may have to contact the highway department, or whatever, you want to do that, but there needs to be a sign put up on each end of the bridge, one lane only.
It's two lanes. It's a two-lane bridge.
It's two lanes, it's not one lane, it's two lanes.
It's a two-lane bridge, we discussed it before, it's our vehicles have got bigger over the years, Larry, I mean, we can't do it, I know, I just said, wait my turn, when you, when you drive a boat, Larry, you gotta wait, honey.
You know, I'm courteous, I'll stop and wait, or I see somebody, make the turn, and I'm already on the bridge, I get right to send the bridge, somebody, somebody can't come through, but, uh, they, and some of the ones will come right on, and you're like, you know, can't they go, yeah, you do the best, but it's.
What about signs that are narrow?
Yeah, we could probably do that.
That would probably get away with it.
Narrow, but it's.
Something.
Yeah, that's something we could probably get away without even asking permission.
You know, some, some people can't wait, uh, twenty seconds, or somebody getting.
So, with CLEDO, when you get the signs list up, you just couple more, bring the signs, and we can do that without even contacting the state.
We, we can work that.
Put that on our side, yeah, that, that would, that would definitely.
We put that on my side, actually.
Yeah, maybe, please, they get, and you say, well, you see that sign?
That's not a problem, that's, that could've saved one, well, actually, could've saved one mirror that took off. We'll take care of that for you, too.
Say at least, uh, call people rude if you want to, but I'm always courteous, trying to be, that if I see somebody approaching for you, I'll stop and give them the first chance, but some, everybody don't do that, I mean, and they, they just want that.
A lot of people know it's a two-lane, and some don't.
Yeah.
Well, and he's talking, he said, some people just don't care.
Right.
But believe, believe it or not, they've been two bucks a pack, like I want, it's actually bigger than what it looks.
Well, yeah, but it's scary.
It's scary.
But when you're, just with another car, you wonder if they're gonna knock your mirror off, or what.
Well, they sure can go out there.
We'll get that taken care of.
One of those things, Stewart House over there.
Brian's already on it.
They've already cleaned everything out.
Brian's been on it today, didn't he, did you know that, over at the Stewart House, uh, to clean up a bit?
Yeah, but I'm talking about the outside.
Yes, he went over, got the phone number today, and made some phone calls.
Okay.
And we've done, been making phone calls, and.
Well, Brian don't let no grass grow.
Well, him, me and him's been on that house over there by the, uh.
He did there, yes.
In a way. The wits, beside the wits, it's a dead-end street. Uh, we, yeah, it's been, the last, he spent two solid days on that last week.
Is that still something that, uh, I have a tension, that the city can do, and charge people?
Uh, we don't have any made us in the Milton, because the, when I send letters to them, they come back, Allen Investments, no longer refused.
If it's something that we can clean up.
And they've been sued by every city they got properties in, I mean, right up to that front, like.
We, uh, I seen that go through, yeah, I tried that a few years back, and what they tried to do is they tried to go in and clean up a lot of properties, so they would go in, clean up, and charge for manpower, and they thought it was great, and it worked pretty good for the first month or two, until people realized that, well, shoot, I can get the city to mow my yard for ten dollars, and it's costing me thirty to get it mowed by a contractor, and then that didn't work out too good for them after that, they stopped it all.
People, you know, like, uh, Harold's Front Row, that was twenty thousand dollar debt worrying on that, that was one.
Somebody got anything else?
There's a couple of properties down in Milton Division that need to be cleaned up, Farleys, and then one right behind the park.
The one behind the park's been hurt, just.
Yeah, Jared got that.
Yeah, they, they're going, they're corporate seeking on that, so I mean, we're not doing that, but, yeah, they're paying care of it.
And the one down at Farleys, it just messes.
Uh, it's a working process.
How long have you been here?
A couple of years, well, a lot of properties in September last year.
That property where that park sits, before you came, it was a old apartment building, and the city actually took the apartment building, and we worked out with the property owners, you know, tax, and that's how the park came to play, and at one time, it was, it was all cleaning, it was pretty bad shape, but that's how that ended up coming to play, we, we worked out that property, it was anxious to give us, donate the property for the tax deals, it worked out really good, and we ended up putting that park, so, at one time, it was pretty bad, I saw it, so, let's work out, let me get some playground for you.
Now, it's gonna have playground, we will definitely make it happen.
Yeah, so, for what it was, five years ago to what it is now?
Probably gonna have to, I'm saying, bet people walking their dogs in there, though, because my grassmowers tell me that it's, uh, pretty bad in CLEDO.
Yeah, I have the signs in my trip, it said, no dogs allowed, Doris has already made the motion, they can do that, and I picked the signs up today, I forgot my.
If you would like to hand them over to CLEDO, they'll hang them for you, because I'd say my grassmowers would love it, wouldn't they, CLEDO?
Yeah, and that's some of the things that, it's not brought to our attention, as soon as it is, we try to move on it quick, because those things are nuisance, and, you know, you don't wanna send around to, you know, if you got kids, like.
You definitely don't want to send them over.
I bet that little part is blocked off, now with the gate, isn't that, for a dog?
I would just nod.
I mean, if somebody, you know, raises enough stink about it.
He's, well, said person is taking it down there, just turning it away. He's, well, said person is taking it down there and just turning it loose, and it's not their yard, it's my yard for that. I'm like, that's right, they got a farm in their yard. Yeah, I said it, I don't care.
So they know, like, we didn't, you know, they got a pound of food.
No.
Yeah, we'll eat that, yeah.
And we truly try to be mindful of that, these guys work hard. And I, I, I wanna make it as easy as we can all.
Does anybody got anything else? Everybody good, sir?
No.
Can I do, council?
Yes.
I wanted to jump back to Woody there, uh, I am the newest, one of the newer appointed youth black man. Uh, came on in December. And it, Milton's huge spell broken back wasn't really contributing portion, but, uh, we definitely wanna thank the city for all you're doing. Uh, y'all don't understand that as a county, we have fought for years to get people to work together. And thankfully, we did have a good leadership at all locations now. We work hand in hand on any project we have and it is greatly appreciated during this last little bit of trouble that we've had. It was literally such a daunting task and we had several agencies in several different cities and people come in to help us. And I actually definitely go with you guys a couple of weekends ago to Disney. And I'm telling you, your guys and our guys, they have all of my respect, because you, you don't understand what they can get into. It's not always a, a three foot line, uh, you know, down to three feet down. And the, the easiest of, uh, kind of materials, they're digging under bridges, they're down in, upside down in yards. And they've got truly tested every single meter of going through just small portions of the lining. And I tip my hat to them. Those guys were hard, they worked it together, I think clarity and was true tremendously to what you helped with. And we hope that we can always be reciprocal, but we can help you in anything we can. And our relationship has very good improved over the last little bit, as far as working on those projects. And, uh, this was a whole long conversation in the past. And I'm glad that you and I can talk about things like that. Seems like it's moving in the right direction all over there in some of these areas. So, but, and it, I'm proud to be the, the, the members from this area because of that. It has to make my job a lot easier than some of these other districts. Uh, you know, FEMA has had a tremendous amount of issues, most of it due to the same problems you guys have. It's just older systems that have not been updated in a while, uh, systems that were given to us that, you know, engineering and things, uh, some of that stuff wasn't available. It's, it's been worked on now and thankful, uh, very thankful for it, kind of government agents and, and all of the, uh, the people that helped to get us back up to speed. It's, uh, anytime you start to worry that, you know, I think that it was, it, it's not just something that you're, you're doing for people. It's something that you should have at any point, cling there anymore. And, uh, the board now, um, I'm just big for all of them, that's a, to provide the best service that it can for the customers. And having people like you guys makes it my team, so thank you.
Alright, anybody got anything else? Favorite time of the night?
I'm making both get you.
And that's how we go home.
I am going to get some pictures of what is going to be the new Everest High School. Any of y'all went to Everest High School, what you're looking at is what they call the Hope Center. I'm taking some photos, gonna do a video on this. They're trying to invest a lot of money in this area. Eddie, I think more people will start coming, I'll see you next meeting, brother. Take care, uh-huh, I think more, I'm coming. Yep, I'll see you. BJ, I'll see you Thursday. Uh-huh, see you, Benny Dell. You, you wanna do good around here. Gonna do some good around here for the people. So, lot of stuff going on there. I can't talk to answer y'all during those meetings, to answer your questions. Now Jimmy, as far as the coal companies donating playground and cable equipment, the coal industry no more exists in Harlan unfortunately. They're pretty much belly up, gone broke, and they don't really mind anything anymore. So we have switched from coal to tourism. We don't have big coal companies here anymore. That's why they, coal companies don't donate the playground equipment. But that Hope Center is gonna be a great thing. So, as you can see, the mayor kept his word, moved the meeting over there instead of in that little bitty tiny room. Yep, somebody's gotta drive the bus. So far, this channel, seriously, has got the meeting moved for people to come, so y'all need to come. We got the American flag cleaned up up there on the water thing. And the only bad thing I guess we done was shut their Facebook page down. They don't like having negative comments. Oh, these are beautiful mountains here. Where I live at is the highest peak in the state of Kentucky. It actually, I think, has eleven of the thirteen highest peaks here. Uh, we got four thousand acres of Black Mountain Offroad Adventure Trail that you can ride around in. But, the high school, the Hope High that they're building, that's gonna be a great, great thing, guys, it really is. And I'm gonna go up there and film a little bit of that high school the way it is now. And the pictures of what it's gonna be maybe, that's why they called it the Hope Center. They gotta get all this water, sewer, their infrastructure straightened out before anybody's gonna come in here and invest millions of dollars. So that's what we're doing. Hey, what's going on, Steve? Yeah, we trying to make a difference. I wish somebody would find a big scene, put these old miners back to work around here, I really do. Well, guys, I wanna end this. I'm gonna go up here and shoot a little bit of the high school and then I'm gonna go home and eat some supper. I've done plenty of days' work, had to come up to the meeting. And we're gonna start going to those Hope Meetings and the tourism meetings, because people need to know what's going on around here. Yeah, they, they moved it, remember I requested last month that they do that so more people would come. And that guy in the black shirt is evidently some rich guy that just moved here. So I'm kinda glad they did move the meeting, cause it made a good impression on him. So, he's like some kinda contractor, builds stuff, I guess. And he said he'd work for the city for free, so. Anyway, guys, let's make change here in Harlan County, get some stuff in here. And make sure if you haven't visited, come ride Black Mountain Offroad Adventure Trails, I guarantee you'll love it. You guys take care, God bless, and I'll see you all on the next ones. I appreciate any super chats, anything like that, take care, I'll see you.